What I did is it went live and then it... There it is.
Well, I guess it's seven o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order. Any additions to the agenda? Hearing none, somebody wish to move the agendas presented? Miles? Okay. Any question on Miles' motion? Hearing none, we'll call a question. It come up for you guys?
Yeah.
I don't. It's not coming up for me, so. So, I'm in favor of it, so it's carried, yes, thank you. Okay, moving on to the minutes of the regular meeting of May the 10th. Any questions on the minutes?
Okay.
Okay, George Lee moves it. Any discussion on George Lee's motion? Hearing none, call a question.
Yes?
It's carried, yeah. So it's carried unanimously. Okay, thank you. Then we'll move on to the, uh, next item on the agenda is the letter of resignation from Dell Olson. Any questions on, whoops, on Dell's re- letter of resignation?
Thought it was nice, those kind words at the bottom, that he's still smiling after all the years. I believe they're moving to him.
Yeah, that's what I've heard too, is that they leave our community again. Uh, okay, moving on to the letters of support for the RCMP. Um, there's five there for you. They're all virtually the same, but different. I think that's gonna be a bit of a trend that we're gonna see.
Has anything been heard, Jack, from them?
There hasn't been anything said publicly about whether they're continuing on or not, so, and that's the hard part, like, uh, all the letters are coming. But, uh, the province hasn't said whether they're moving forward or not. They say they're, they're doing the consultation portion of it, so, but they uh, yet to engage other than through AUMA and RMAs.
So I guess in a way, they, they're still getting the letters of, of negative support. I'm sure there's if there's any positive ones, we haven't seen any so far.
So do we just leave it for now and hope that it all will work its way out, or?
We, again, like we said, well, at the last meeting, uh, you guys have participated in the, in the feedback portion so far. I know George Lee, Paul, and Lorna, you uh, you, you guys had, uh, administration sat through two days of that, uh, presentations.
Well, my feeling is that if we haven't heard anything, maybe by next meeting, as to what they're doing, maybe we needed just a, a letter further your in favor or not in favor.
Yeah, we could definitely bring it back, that's for sure.
Yeah, I'm sure we'll receive more by the next meeting.
Yeah, I mean, it, like I said, this seems to be, or in the meeting, we get some letters of.
Uh, we're at, just...
Pardon me?
I'm just thinking the date, so we're...
May 25th.
Twenty fifth.
Yeah, so they, we'd have two meetings in June. I would think that they would have made some decision or let us know something by the end of that time.
When you're saying somebody that...
I mean, the provincial government would say whether they're continuing on or they're still doing consultation, or...
Well, it's funny how, you know, in a way, we complain when they cut consultation up too soon, and then we complain when they drag it out too long, so I'm not sure which is the one best. I mean, really, it's, it's a dog show, isn't it? You know, you never know which is better.
Yeah, you just want to make sure that people have had the chance, and it sounds like you've had quite a bit of time, so.
It's quite disappointing too that AHS, or AUMA and, and RMA haven't done much more for...
Lately.
You know, we haven't heard anything from them lately, so officially, I mean.
Yeah.
But all the, all the letters that we have been receiving have all been in support of keeping the RCMP and, and the relationship that has been developed over the years, so.
Well, I haven't heard any advantage to going to the provincial.
Yeah, I'm not sure either.
Why would you want to?
Now, I didn't really, the, all the letters have been stating the same fact, that, you know, there hasn't been any, uh, anything to prove that that would be beneficial, and and they continue to look like they're moving forward with it. But of course, if you ask, they're not doing anything until the consultation is, is over, so it kinda leaves you in a spot, and I think that's probably why everybody is just sending letters, because they nothing's, nothing's been happening with it.
That they have a defined period of consultation?
I, I don't think so. I think they're just kinda leaving it open and, you know, hoping to get, and like I said, that's the biggest problem, you've heard it, they cut off too soon. Then they get condemned for not listening to the public, and then, or listening to us, or whichever. And then if they go too long, then they get condemned for, you know, not giving them a specific date, I guess, too, so I don't know. You're right.
But I think when we listened to those two days, I thought that they were gonna be done by the end of February. It's, it was what I gathered from that, so we're definitely beyond that point. Okay, well, maybe we'll see what comes next one.
Okay, any other discussion on those letters? Okay, we went on to the county, 2021 County Recreation Funding Letter. So they have sent back a letter of what they're willing to support us on, on the operational side.
I did follow up with the county administration for the rec agreement. They said they're still working on it, so.
So this is just the balance that they have calculated that...
Did get a question from a couple councillors on this, just pointing out that they, the $45,000 in capital, they are holding in their account, so that doesn't fit into, that's why that number doesn't correspond.
Okay.
Have they actually sent for money?
Yes, he, he dropped the letter off and the check at the same time.
Okay, anything else on that? Hearing that, we'll move on to the Alberta Recreation of Parks Association proclamation request. It's pretty straightforward.
I move that we
We do have a policy.
Call a secret out, just to put it on our website and...
Yes, so you'd like to proclaim it?
Okay, so Laura moves to proclaim the...
Which uh, corresponds, Bonnie, we, we are a member, and, uh, they are planning a, an event in June for recognition of it, so.
So do you want, as a separate motion still, though?
No, we, yeah, we can do a separate motion to, uh, to have that council proclaim June as.
Okay, so Laura moves it. Okay, any discussion on Laura's motion? Hearing none, I will call the question. And it is carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to the Town of High River Coal Policy Support. Questions on?
I know this is, is, uh, controversial, but I would move that we, um, send a letter of...
The, sign the endorsements?
Yes, to, to support them.
That's all they're asking for, either a letter or to decide.
Oh, okay, either or, oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's funny how they get such a negative impact on this, but yet they can dump their shit in our, our drinking water, they can dump it in, so. But anyway. Any further discussion on Laura's motion?
I just find it very closed.
Pardon me?
It's very closed, it's, dang, that's it, no more?
No more coal.
Yeah, no more coal, no more chromo problems in Alberta. I should just say, you know, no more car dumps, and their shit, and our drinking water anymore. But, uh, that'll never happen.
Well, I just finished reading the book about Newfoundland and coal nineteen hundreds to nineteen seventies, and what how devastating it was to their province, so I would hate to see that happen here.
Okay, so, Laura's got a motion on the floor, any more discussion?
Was there not? Maybe I missed something years ago. I thought they were gonna be shutting all the coal mining operations down. I thought that was in the plans for their...
Those were the coal-fired, uh, energy plants? So not the actual mining, they were shutting down the energy plants?
Oh, okay, so that's the one.
Sheerness and...
Oh, okay, okay.
All open. Yeah.
Something, something, you know, why would there be a need for coal then?
Because we're still exporting it.
Yeah, and that's...
We exported for the making, uh, for, we exported to, uh, China and India and that, for making steel, those sort of things.
That, that's the biggest complaint that they have, is that most of this coal is going to be exported.
Exported.
It's not staying in our own hometowns, or, but again, you know, they can destroy other parts of the world and not think anything of it, but yet, you know, something upstream from them, that they believe is upstream from them, headwaters, is going to create other issues, so, um, you know, you, you get into some of the coal mining communities, like down in the Cores Ness Pass and that, and their attitude is substantially different than, um, Mayor Snobby's, his attitude is.
And their boards?
Well, definitely, because it's, if...
It's the heart of their community.
It's the heart of their community. It's like us saying, you know, we're opposed to agriculture. We get rid of agriculture, because all the stuff that agriculture does for destroying the environment, you know, if that's the relationship, you know, then what's gonna happen for our community, because our, we're an agriculture community. We are not a oil community anymore. It's all been shut down. And that's what's happened to, to, you get to Coleman and Spar, Spar, Sparhead, Sparland, and, you know, Blairmore. All those guys down there, and they're saying, you know, in this, this letter of support is to support them in shutting those mines down.
But not everyone in Blairmore and Cores Ness Pass, because I've talked to some that...
Oh, I'm sure there are some that don't agree with it either, but it's the same thing, you know, I'd like to see some of them say, oh, you know, since we're not gonna have this, you know, we're willing to have our taxes double in our communities to keep them alive. And I'll bet you ninety percent of them say, no, don't increase our taxes or decrease our services, but eliminate your industry that's, that's supporting your taxes, ba- tax base. And I would bet that in Coleman, Blairmore, if you listen to the, the mayors of those communities, they're all saying, this is very disappointing, that one municipality is pitting something against another municipality that has no effect on that municipality at all, so. And yet, we're downstream from this municipality that's writing this letter, and they think nothing of what they're doing to our drinking water. Nothing to our drinking water, and we just accept it. We don't complain about it, because, you know, they're upstream from us.
Then maybe it's time we did.
We went, uh, about twenty years ago, we went through it with Alberta Environment, and they told us that it was approved, and there was nothing to do about it.
Yeah, suck it up.
Car dimes directly into Frank Lake, and then we, uh, it overflows into the little bow, and we were getting adverse effects from it, and we were told to change our treatment process.
And we still are. I mean, take a look after the flood, you know, I mean, it was okay for them to dump all their sewage into their, into the little bow, and we got it, and we paid for it. We paid for it in the treaty, but, you know. Uh, but anyway, that, that has nothing to do with this request. This request was made, um, Laura has made a motion to support this coal policy restriction policy that is being in front of us. Any other further discussion? Okay, hearing that, we'll call a question. And it is, uh, deleted. No, yeah, it's deleted, it was, sorry, it's defeated, it was a tie. Three, three, three against and three in favor, so it's a tie, tie's a loss, so it's defeated. Okay, moving on to the Municipal Planning Commission Subdivision Appeal.
Sorry, uh, I messed up the MSI.
Oh, I apologize, I saw that letter of support. Okay, so there was a letter sent to us from, on the MSI funding. Any questions? Go ahead.
Just for those that are looking at the numbers, they are higher than previous years, but that's because they're ball loading 2021 to try to stimulate the economy. Uh, our numbers for MSI over the next couple of years are still, would be reduced twenty, uh, five percent, but, uh, they are giving us a fair chunk of it upfront in this one, so you'll see substantially lower numbers in twenty-two and twenty-three.
That one's gonna be tough. I'm glad they give it to us now.
So this is, if I understand what you're saying, this is, will it be pretty much the same amount of money, but it's just...
It's the same amount, they're just giving us more of it upfront.
So will we budget it accordingly, still, over three years?
Yeah, doing the street program the way you've done and that with a, unless a big project comes up that you dump a bunch of MSI in, the way that you've been planning, uh, should continue on, and should allow for, uh, continuing the street programs and, and those things, and keeping a little bit aside for projects that come up. It, like everything else, it just gets tighter as it's reduced.
So is the operating allocation and the capital allocation about the same ratio?
Yes, yeah, and so the MSI operating hasn't changed, it, it went up just a very little, and we use that, uh, for direct operations. We use our, that to pay for our computer programs, for our county software, all of those things, so.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
So this is just basically for information?
For your information.
Because they, nobody's gonna change the numbers anyway?
We could ask for more, but I've done it calculated to 2023, and I'll just continue to, uh, capital budget, uh, around it.
Okay, nothing more on that? Okay, moving on to the next one, which is the Municipal Planning Commission Subdivision Approval.
So, as many council know from Nancy's report at the last meeting, uh, the subdivision went before the MPC, and it was approved with the conditions, and so we uh, attached the, uh, the approval from the MPC, so making sure that council's aware. If you get questioned about, uh, the subdivision? Council was proposed and approved.
Okay.
So even though they still haven't heard back from some of these people?
Yeah, it was a heard from the MPC to go ahead. There is a waiting period of thirty days? Thirty days?
That was twenty-one days?
Oh. Might be.
Twenty-one days.
Yeah, okay, sorry, I at the back of my head, it was thirty. It may very well be twenty-one. But yes, at this point, it's approved by the, and, uh, and will not need any further approvals.
Okay, anything else on that? If not, somebody wish to file with response? Help Laura? Thank you. Any discussion on Laura's motion? Hearing none, we'll call a question. And it's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to financial report.
Cash deal.
Cash statement.
And since this is just about the end of June.
Well, as many of you passed on the way in, we have the tax notices all ready to go at the end of the month, so that will definitely help with our cash flow situation. As you can see, our cash, uh, we still have, at the time this statement was taken, we had a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars in the bank. As you can see, we depleted just about all of our reserves and paid for the pool, so, uh, those will be replenished when we do the actual borrowing, which we're looking at the deadline, uh, for applications is the end of June for September first uptake from Alberta Capital Finance, so that's where, that's where we're at right now.
I would move that we use this for information?
Okay, good, Laura, any discussion on Laura's motion? Hearing none, we'll call a question. And it is carried unanimously. And we went on to the year-to-date.
Overall.
Go to the next question.
Mr. CEO, is there anything?
Overall, we're in, overall, we're in good position, again, for not having taxes collected yet. Uh, you guys know that we, uh, our budget looks at about five hundred thousand dollars with the expenses per month. This shows us a one point five through, uh, through four months instead of three, so overall financially, we're, we're doing all right through that portion.
Does the money that we received from the county go in this, or does that be funded?
It's, the recreation funding goes directly into the budget, yeah. You have line items under the pool, so the, as they broke it up in that letter, we have line items under the pool, the arena and the recreation.
So the revenue that was at one, one thousand, one hundred and forty dollars will get bumped up substantially with the county's checks.
The revenue is through there, yeah. So it was included in the revenue portion of the budget.
Just not on the revenue report, sorry.
I was gonna say, I'll move this to the...
Thank you, Paul. So Paul's moved this. Okay, any more discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll call a question. And it's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to current business, Stars Calendar Partnership Proposal.
They sent this out, there was the confidential side of this for the costing of the calendars and whatnot, uh, so we've retracted it from the, from the public version as requested from Stars. We went through this administratively, and, uh, very few concerns about, uh, doing this. It seems like a nice alternative to make sure, because they're not going to be sitting, as you all know. They generally have, uh, folks hired that sit in our grocery store for a couple of days to a week. Uh, this does allow for us to sell either here or at the tourist center when we're allowed to open it again. So the only thing that came up, uh, was from a financial side, is, uh, that if we're collecting funds on behalf of, uh, Stars, for anybody that uses a credit card or debit, uh, we pay the charges on that, so. Just so for everybody to be aware of, that, you know, it can be as high as five percent, so the community may not charge.
So does this have any bearing on the fact that we give them, is it so much per year, two thousand?
Yeah, two, two dollars per resident, yeah.
Okay, does that have any bearing on a decrease if we sold hundred calendars?
No, no, they're just, they're just supplying us, uh, the fifty calendars, and then if we sell more, we can, we can recall less more. So, I think they're just looking for alternatives to not having people sitting in stores. And they already partnered with quite a few municipalities, so.
I would think having it at the truck st- uh, station would be a good place, because you would have people that aren't necessarily, uh, Vulcanites.
That's right, more, more traffic.
Probably purchasing it, so.
And based on the, on the content of the letter, it looks like they're more trying to, trying to get to the people that don't normally access the internet and things like that, so the same people that won't go online and buy a calendar are the same people that won't go online and pay their utility bill or the taxes, while they're the ones that physically need to come into the town office, that's part of their, uh, part of their deal, and this allows them a place to advertise, and so I don't think that they're, they're looking at this as the sole way of selling. I think this is hitting all of the, of the people that don't have the access to do the online.
Okay, any thoughts?
Uh, sorry, I, we have missed it here, but, although, there'll be posters, is there posters we can distribute to let people know where?
Yes, they'll supply us, so they supply us with, uh, a box of fifty
Information posters.
Uh, information posters for the town office and other prime locations within the community, so the grocery store, gas station, and then a contact information sheet, so that if we do sell out, we can order more. And then they don't bill us till the end of the year for, yeah, that's the confidential part. Whatever calendars are left over, we could use for hampers at a reduced rate. But calendars will sell for their thirty dollars per calendar, that Stars would normally charge.
Okay, any thoughts on this? Should we participate, or?
We'll make that motion that we participate with first.
Yeah.
When the calendar's funded.
George Lee moves this. Any question on George Lee's motion? Hearing none, we'll call a question. And it's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to Vulcan Library Board Representative Reconnaissance Request.
So I worked with Connie, the, uh, she originally, they're gonna request for the, for Dorian for his two-year term, but when I reviewed the, uh, uh, the terms that we have up, others that were due this year as well, so I talked to her, and they have officially made the request to do, uh, the renewals. Uh, the, the three that have renewed, uh, said that they only wanted a, a one-year term. The library can, uh, can recommend, uh, member of large for up to three-year terms, and it's up to council to, to do the official appointment according to their bylaws. Yeah, for some history on the backside of that, uh, I know the library can have anywhere between five and ten members at large, including one to two councillors, a maximum of two, but we generally keep one. And there was conversation, uh, a couple of years ago about, uh, whether some committee should have the whole allotment of ten or, and so the library currently right now is sitting at eight, including Laura. So with the appointment of these four.
Sometimes it's not so great to have a large board, because then you end up, if you don't have a if you still go with the fifty plus one, which is most rules, it's hard to get a quorum.
You haven't had much trouble with a quorum on the library board?
Well, that's good to hear, because just by everything I've seen around quorums, I know Laura may have commented that since one group has gone to Zoom or that type, it's, the quorum's been much easier to qualify, or get, get, but I know the rec department sometimes has problems too, but anyway.
So, so based on this, they're not asking for a three-year term, they're asking for a two for Dorian, and then a one-year term for, uh, Liz Hammond, for Penny Rush-Delton, for, I, I read, our leader one, so. It's up to council, if they, the recommendation is from the board, Connie just, uh, signed the letter on the video. And we're chairing this here.
Right here.
So is that your motion?
Would you like to make a motion?
Sure, let's do that.
I'll sit looking at you. You feel like you have eyes on me?
Hint, hint.
Okay, so Laura moves that we point these four people to the library board. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call a question. And again, it's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to the next item, which is the Water Clire Committee.
And I'm not gonna lie, it's because I had the spreadsheet opened, and I scrolled through all the rest of the committees and realized that, uh, Stu is up for appointment as well, so he uh, has said that he would let his name stand. He obviously is the chair of the committee and has been since... committee and has been since it formed, and his credentials haven't changed. He's still fire chief and, uh, a member of the fire department for many years, still seems very interested in, in continuing to contribute to the.
And does the darn fine job.
Sorry, Dave?
And does the darn fine job.
Oh, great, great.
He ceased, he said he would let his name stand for another two-year term, and council wishes to appoint him. If not, you can, we go through the advertising process.
Okay, Paul moves to appoint Mr. Birch to represent town as a. Any question on Paul's motion? Hearing none, we'll call a question. And it is carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to the next item, which is the 2021 Show Home Incentives.
As council's aware, uh, in order to promote development, uh, you, uh, council approved a policy that allows a developer to, uh, build a show home, and while it sits vacant, uh, the council waived the taxes on the improvement portion of it, not the land, because you would have had to pay for the, uh, for the land regardless. So, uh, this is the two show homes that we currently have in our community.
So one hasn't sold?
No. The one that fell off, there was three last year, that one that came off sold, but these two apparently are. I believe that one of them has an offer on it, but as of right now.
Okay, sure. I just thought it saw.
Yes, and for the purposes of this, so that council knows, uh, when taxes are waived, they're only waived for the developer, so they're not waived for the entire year. So, when this happens, you make motion to refund that amount. If a property is sold inside that year, as you know, lawyers ask how much the first owner, uh, property tax has to pay, how much the second property owner tax has to be paid. We do that calculation for and provide, uh, with the reduction for the developer's side of, uh, of the taxation, so. These two show homes, as you can see, when they don't have the incentive, are, uh, are significant, uh, increases to our tax base, which is the, why you wanted to incentivize having a show home built once the.
So all we do is the, the municipal side, the school and the lodge, we don't?
We don't. And again, these ones are only on the land portion of it, so they pay full tax on the, on the municipal tax on the land.
I move that we go ahead with this.
Thank you, Laura. Laura moves this. Any discussion on Laura's motion? Hearing none, we'll call a question. And it is carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to the 2021 Commercial Development Incentive.
So as council knows, we bring these up as the applications come forward. So you've approved all of the applications, but because it affects, uh, you can only, uh, you can only make decisions on taxes in the current year. You have approved these, but you need to, uh, now direct administration to, uh, to eliminate that, that percentage of that tax or these tax rolls before, obviously, we send out the tax notices. So these are the, are the, are the five that we have. Uh, on the, it's easiest to tell on the breakout sheet that was provided on the very last. Uh, you can see the one hundred percent is the last year on that one, and that's a fairly substantial, uh, commercial building within our community. Uh, all three on top are all, uh, two of them are brand-new builds, and one of them was a, a new business into a, into an old building that, uh, that put a substantial amount of, uh, cash into renovating the building. The last two are the incentives for, uh, that was discussed at the last meeting for the renovations. And as you can see, uh, you know, the assessment at one point six, that there's still thirty, uh, thirty-five thousand dollars, or thirty-three thousand dollars in taxes that are still gonna come from that property. The incentive for renovation is to encourage people to keep their businesses up. So, total, uh, refund for this year is twelve thousand four hundred and four. It's been included in the budget, and, uh, and again, next year, you'll see that that, that hundred percent level will drop off, so we'll see a significant drop in that as well. And the thousand dollar ones are one time.
One in five years.
One every five years. And, and we'll address that one in the policy itself, uh, making sure that it goes, and I'll, I'll talk about it when we get to the policy.
Good. Any thoughts on this?
I'll make the motion to approve our recommendation.
Okay, thank you, Laura. Any discussion on Laura's motion? Hearing none, we'll call a question. And it's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to the policy.
Yeah, and based on the, on the conversation from the last council meeting, I took, uh, took this back and, uh, administration went, went through it, and, uh, it was easy to change the one line, uh, to account for what council had, had mentioned is a concern that a business owner could change hands several times and be able to apply for this thing year after year. So, by rewording it, that it can only be applied to the tax roll every five years, tax roll doesn't change when somebody, uh, uh, changes ownership of a property. Tax roll remains the same. So, uh, this only allows it to be applied to a tax roll once every five years, so the concerns for that are easily addressed. Now, sorry.
So what happens about, I think it was our understanding and their understanding, has that been addressed here? I couldn't see that it had.
For?
What they feel is.
Renovation.
Renovation.
And that's what I put in my report, is, uh, so council discussed the intent of the business renovations incentive, and if any changes are required in order to specify the parameters of what renovation to qualify it or not. Uh, we looked at, uh, at that, and unless you get very specific, like, you know, brickwork on the front of a building has to be to this standard or, or that, we didn't find anything that was very definitive for renovation. A renovation is a renovation, and, you know, whether that be a furnace or whether that be a balance on the front of the building. So, what we came back with is, is, uh, section five point three of the policy. And this, this is why this policy doesn't allow administration to just blankly approve these things. Based on this criteria of the policy, each application for tax concession or grant will be considered by council and may be rejected. Council decisions have been, uh, or decisions are, shall be considered final, and council reserves the right to approve each incentive package individually and to customize conditions to any specific project. So, really what it is, is you bring it forward, council will discuss it. And I know that's tough because now it's up to you guys to define that. If you would like us to put parameters in it, that's why I've asked for in that recommendation. If you would like to see other amendments, please help us with some feedback, 'cause the ones we looked at were very specific. This kind of bricks on the front of the building, this kind of signage, this kind of curb, you know, uh, front, uh, and that's the only thing that they took.
So would they, uh, would the business have to approach council before they did anything to see if it would be approved?
They don't now, no.
No, but that kind of puts them in, I mean, if they're gonna do it, they're probably gonna do it anyhow.
It does, and, and when you look at really what the, what the incentive is, is it's up to a thousand dollars. It's basically ten percent of any project. So, it's, it's anything up to ten thousand dollars worth of work. And that's why we used that renovation as a, as a blank, because then all that allowed, you know, replacement of windows, um, you've approved it for replacement of carpet. Uh, a good one is those two that you saw this evening. They were both, uh, for renovations of roofs. One was a tin roof, one was a shapel. So, uh, yeah, it's, it's, it's really throwing this, you know, we, we've covered the first part. I need some, need some feedback from council for, uh, specifics on this, unless you're comfortable with, uh, council continuing to prove the, uh, prove these on a base, case-by-case basis.
Go ahead, Laura.
I think it's gotta be approved on a case-by-case basis, just 'cause what's, there's a building downtown that's, uh, last wind, there's stuff pulling off everywhere. Uh, that would be an obvious choice to get, say, for them to do renovations on the siding or something like that. But, uh, there could be an established business in town, whether your exterior is fine, but they wanna renovate the interior, do, who's to say? And there's new businesses coming to town, you can't really put specifications on, say that it's this or this, 'cause as new businesses come into town, our times change. Everything changes, you can't just, otherwise you're trying to put it, whatever. I think it's, you gotta be flexible and not take it case by case.
I guess my question was, should it be case by case, but should it be decided upfront or after they've done the renovation?
My opinion is if, uh, what kind of like what you were, or Kim said, like, if it's a business, they're probably gonna do it anyways.
I think so, but anyhow, yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, if they, I guess it would be up to them if they, if they came in and said, "We're gonna do this," they could see if the council might approve it or not. But as a counselor, you know, we could give them ideas, but it's still not gonna be officially approved, in my opinion, till it's done. I'm not gonna give anybody that, an incentive, 'cause they might say, "Oh, well, yeah, we'll do this," and then life happens, they get the incentive, but then they don't do it. They don't fulfill their, so, yeah, their obligation, then we look silly for.
Yeah, I wouldn't say give them the money, but give them the okay that they're on the right track. I don't know whether that's important or not.
I would say probably do that before September, October of an election year, because what I think's important, what you think here's important, if I'm going out and you're coming in, might be two different things.
Well, and probably what I want, and it's not my money, so it might be quite different.
And one thing that was brought up in the discussion was the intent, the intent of the, of this, and, uh, Nancy and I went back and dug through a bunch of the notes that went along with this as well. And one of the things is, the other, uh, stuff that is in there addresses new businesses coming down into town or businesses buying a new building. It, there is nothing in there that addressed a longstanding business that's been in, in place for fifty years or, you know. And the, the question to us at that time was, what are we doing to support those ones? And that's where this business, uh, the renovation incentive came in, is if you've owned a building on Main Street for fifty years and could use the renovations, and that, the town supporting it by paying ten percent of that bill, whether it be a furnace or a front window or new door, uh, that's, that's support for that new business. And that's what it came down to for, from the incentive side, was supporting our existing business. This is the only one that supports our existing businesses. So, I don't know if that helps with the discussion. As far as letting them know in advance, you would need a criteria. You would need something for us to sit down and when they come with the application to say, yes, this would be approved, or no, it wouldn't. And that's where we got hung up, because we had one that didn't have any comments for replacing a roof on one building, and the application came in the next one.
Yeah, but there's a difference between the two. The other one was a, a new business that bought an old building that renovated it to make it, this other one is an existing business that has repairs and maintenance that needs to be done. Um, in my opinion, repairs and maintenance is a different issue than an incentive to incentivize that business. Now, um, it's, it's only a thousand bucks, and it's only good for five, you know, it's five years, so you gotta kind of pick which one you're gonna do, you know, and it's only up to ten percent, up to, you know, or ten thousand dollars. So, I mean, I, I appreciate, but I, I think you're totally wrong on that we didn't look at the other one because it was a new business. They took a building that had nothing in it as a business for a period of time and turned it into a building that now they have a business running out of. So, to me, to me, there were two different things.
But from an application standpoint.
Both of them were roofs, yes, I appreciate that. They're both are roofs, but, um, I think there's a difference between repairs and maintenance. And, but again, on the other hand, like you'd said, you take a building that, you know, you do some repairs and maintenance too, and if this thousand dollars makes that business substantial, substantially and viable, then, then we have fulfilled our obligation, I guess. So, like I said, like I said, it's only a thousand bucks every five years.
Yeah, and possibly we're trying to make this harder than it is.
Yeah, and I think that's what, you know, administration's asking for is, you know.
We're having trouble defining what is, what is maintenance and what is a renovation.
Right, yeah.
Because regular maintenance to some, and this is, this is where it got really ugly when we were debating it, is levels of maintenance. Because to some, maintenance is, you know, replacing your carpet every five years if you have traffic on it. Some people, for the, the, replacing the carpet is never an issue because they don't, it's not an integral to their business. It's, we got really hung up on levels of maintenance. Some people oil their fangs and, you know, those sort of things. Other people wait till they die before they replace them. So, we, we had a lot of trouble trying to put something in this that would allow you guys to easily go, "Yeah, that fits that criteria, that's a renovation," because it's gonna be so different. And that's why it was so broad to begin with, is it could be so much different. It could be replacing window, it could be replacing carpet, it could be replacing roof.
And maybe all the replacements, no matter what, are perfectly fine, and it might improve the whole situation, so.
Right.
Personally, if, uh, we don't have many more issues like this, you know, just having the new addition here of the once every five years spelled out, I think maybe that's good enough for right now. And then if it happens to come up every year, then maybe be looking at it more and get.
If every time you're having an application, you're having a, a long debate about what qualifies as maintenance, then, then it needs to be specified.
And then I think, too, you know, your comment too, Laura, about, you know, we are attached to the, the role, the tax rule, not the business itself. So if it's business A, sells to my brother, and now it becomes business B, you know, then they think that they could apply for it every year, they can't. This is only one time on that tax roll of that property. So I think that they kind of semi-tightened up that loophole that some of us were kind of worried about, me selling to my brother, then to my sister, and then to my cousin, to my aunt, but it all stays in the family.
I'd be completely okay with just accepting the new business renovation incentive, maybe only five to tax roll, like, one seventy-five years.
So as presented for now?
As presented, and then, um, I guess this falls into the next council's jurisdiction. If, uh, if it starts to be a problem, then.
And again, uh, you guys, you know, uh, we deal with the applications as they come up. So, you know, there may be two more before the end of the year, but we've only had three total in, since you adopted this policy in 2017. So, and two of them are this year, so.
Okay, so Laura's made that motion to alter the policy P L twelve.
And amend it.
Or as presented. Okay, any question on Laura's motion? Hearing none, we'll call a question. And it's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to the next item, which is the Elder Abuse, Regional Response to Elder Abuse Request. Okay, moving on to the next item, which is the elder abuse, regional response to elder abuse request.
All the guys, I got this yesterday, so I contacted Mayor and asked if I could add it to the agenda. And the reasoning is the, uh, is the timing of it. They wanna start putting the stuff up before the next council meeting, so, uh, this, this program's been in place for three years now and, uh, it's been quite successful for the committee, so they're making the same request to allow, uh, four ribbons and information to be tied to public property, uh, from June seventh. And then they didn't specify in this year's letter, but we always give them a couple of days after the la, after the seniors day, so that gives them till Friday to have anything that's left removed. Uh, in the past, not very much stuff is usually left. It only takes one person, a portion of the day to go collect everything else.
Can I make that motion to move on?
Okay, George Lee moves this.
To request the purple ribbon campaign.
Okay, any discussion on George Lee's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. And it's carried out, so... Okay, moving on, I agree to the Old Man Regional Services Commission Executive Meeting. Any questions on any of that one? That's from the people at eight. Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to the Annual General Reading of the Vulcan Regional Response to Elder Abuse Council. Any questions on that document? Hearing none, we'll move on to the Vulcan Regional Response to Elder Abuse Council's meeting minutes. Any questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to Victim Services. Any questions on the Victim Services groups? Hearing none, we'll move on to the Call Course. Okay. Hearing none, we have a motion to public committee reports. Any discussion on Laura's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. And it's carried out, so... Okay, moving on to council reports, Councilor Taylor.
You can have the call person, you've just seen, and dealt with the MPC one. And any other little tidbit I've got for you, the repairs, uh, water treatment plant? Not all the bills, but the vast majority are. Sixty-five thousand, six hundred. Last thing I thought.
Yeah, you were thinking it was gonna be a little bit more, wasn't it?
I was thinking over a hundred.
That's good.
That's it.
Any questions for Paul? Hearing none, thank you, sir, and we'll move on to Councilor votes.
Um, I was also at the MPC, I sat in for a while, and I was at Victim Services and Elder Abuse and all the mechanics were there.
Okay, any questions for George Lee? Hearing none, thank you, George Lee, move on to Councilor Magnusson.
I was supposed to have, be at the MPC meeting, but since it was just one item on the agenda and I'd involved in the company, I, George Lee was kind enough to step in for me. Uh, it's the only meeting I had, uh, just a reminder for everyone. Uh, positive response from the pictures of the grads on the light poles, the wind, and a little... Cover on some of them, but, uh, reminder that this Saturday at, is it six? Is the rate for the grads.
Oh, good.
So, I have...
The pictures will be back up by Friday.
Are, are they doing the same route again this year for the grad, do you know?
No, I'm not sure.
Oh, okay.
Haven't heard.
I haven't.
If I receive anything, I'll forward it on to you guys.
Yes, okay.
And so, uh, acknowledging last year and how there were like two hundred cars or whatever lined up, if you wanted to be there, you thought I should be there soon?
Start there, you know?
Yeah.
Hang out by the elevator all afternoon.
Yeah, we can, you can park your car there and walk home.
They just have a spot?
Hit my steps, yeah.
On the taxi service.
Okay, any other thoughts or questions for Laura? Okay, thank you, moving on to Councilor Thomas.
We had two library meetings this last couple of weeks. Uh, the first was to bring everybody up to speed on our, um, band patron, so everybody is on the same page. We are just finalizing the letter to said person, and it will be, um, sent via registered mail so that we know he has received it, he can't say that he did not.
Double register.
What's that?
Double register.
Okay. Um, and then we had our, our regular meeting and it's, I mean, they're basically all the same at this point, just up to speed on how Connie's had, how things are going at the library with everything changing so often. We just kind of keep everybody up to speed, but we don't have any programming or anything we can do right now, so... That's about all.
Any questions for Laura? Okay, hearing none, thank you, Councilor Sean.
Well, I was supposed to have, um, Marcus Foundation tonight starting at six, but I said I could stay till six-thirty or quarter to seven, and they didn't have a, a building to hold it in 'cause the county offices are being used by the auditors. So, Lori thought we could use here, and then I told her it was council, so that kinda messed that up, and... So, in the end, they decided to, uh, just cancel it 'cause there was nothing really important on the agenda at that point, although there will be some business plan that has to be done up there before the end of June. And, uh, my health and wellness is tomorrow night, so I have had nothing.
Okay, any questions for Laura? Hearing none, thank you very much, Laura. Um, moving on to me, I guess, we had a, um, attraction and retention committee meeting and, um, not a lot, same thing. They talked a little bit about COVID. They're trying to make this, this short, um, I was gonna say movie, but a short, um...
Video.
Video, and they've been trying to do it for, for months, but they just haven't been able to get it done because of COVID. You know, they, one restriction after the other. They, they talked a little bit about the, um, nurse recognition, um, last week, but there was quite a few things going on for it, so they participated in just doing a little bit in, in the hospital itself. Other than that, I had a pool, uh, meeting and the turnover, the keys type of thing, and then we had the two tours. Um, there was one tour for council, and most of us got a chance to see one of the counselors take a, uh, opportunity to go down the slide, and then the second, um, counselor, she got there late, I'm not sure, did she go down the slide or...
No, but I was told that she's afraid of heights, so, uh, everybody in the room should be very proud of her for going to the first slide on the, on the tower.
I was very glad myself, too.
And she stood there and enjoyed the view for a long time.
Oh, that's good.
But I did hang on to the rail.
You did. And point blank told me she wasn't going any further.
That's, that's good.
Next time, I will.
No, that's all right. Well, we appreciate everybody being able to take the time. It's unfortunate Michelle wasn't able to participate in it because of her timing, but, you know, hopefully she'll get a chance to, to tour the place, too. And then I went with the second tour, which was supposed to be for some of the other ones, like some of the red board, some of the ones that were on, some of the committee, and so it was, it was to a degree well attended, but, um... There was some concerns raised about some of the stuff, but most of it was very, very, very positive. I think everybody's quite impressed with the way it looks, but... Um, and that was it for me, for, I'm supposed to have a, you know, solid waste tomorrow night, but we haven't heard anything, so I'm not sure it's on or not, so, um, and then on Friday is, is sale, so... Other than that, that's all good for me, less than, yeah, so...
So, is the pool up and running?
Yes.
And how are they doing it, is swim club?
Squid, swim club, so, I can give a brief update, I was gonna do it with my report, but, uh, but yeah, no, uh, Saturday... Uh, Friday, obviously, with the rain and stuff, uh, HS came in and, and allowed them to open, but it was too cold to, uh, to let anybody in. So, they used Saturday to get everything oper, operational, they opened Sunday and Monday to swim club and refunded, because of the weather, of course, being the rain, uh, they refunded, uh, the family rentals that were booked for, uh, Sunday. And they had twenty-five kids burying ages with their swim clubs go through each day. So, uh, the school was in today, so all of the, uh, the elementary school, so, uh, I... I had a young man that was the first group in there and said it was great, they, uh, they all enjoyed it there. Uh, I know the little people were very disappointed because the teacher and, and whatnot, they weren't allowed to use the hot tub or the water slides, but, uh, they were quite impressed with the, with the pool itself. Good time, and I believe they got the majority of the, uh, elementary school through today, so...
That's good. Any questions on... Okay, somebody wish to move to council reports? Okay, any discussion on Laura's motion? Hearing none, call the question. And it's carried out, so... Okay, moving on to the activity list.
So, we were able to accomplish everything from the last meeting. The only outstanding items, a few of them are gonna be longstanding on here, so unless council has any questions on, uh... Any of the outstanding items. I met with county and discussed, uh, both the water, the, uh, the water servicing agreement, the recreation agreement, and just, uh, had a brief discussion on, uh, the water and sewer servicing for the subdivision, and all are still in pro, process at the county, so... Yeah, didn't make a lot of progress there.
Okay, any questions for Kim on his activity list? Okay, we see a done, we'll move on to the...
So, we see a report, uh, of note, uh, of interest, obviously, the pool opening, and, uh, we had the turnover meeting with Tango and Ward Brothers. Uh, everything went fairly smoothly with that. We did have to wait right through till Friday for HS approval, uh, for opening, and everything came through. She didn't give us a certificate to hang on the wall, but gave us verbal confirmation for opening, so we made sure we confirmed that by email.
That was rather close, cutting it.
It was cutting it very close. We're still working at getting, uh, the phones in there, uh, properly. We have to port the number from tell us, which has proven to be a little bit more difficult than it should be, but we kind of anticipated that after we didn't go with the tell us service into building, so... Uh, on a staffing note, uh, Rita has formally accepted, uh, position of belt clerk, and will be starting June first, and Gabrielle Trudel has formally accepted the offer of employment for community peace officer, and also will start June first. This is the first time in my lifetime of being with the town that we've hired two people on the same day, other than summer students, so, so this is, uh, good. Uh, they're both very excited to, to get here and get started. Uh, with Rita, that gives Nancy a month of training with her as well, so that should work out very well. And for, uh, for Gabby, uh, she'll have to get her appointment from the province, which can take, uh, one to two months, so at the next council meeting, we'll do her appointment as a bylaw officer so that she can get out with these residence with the uniformal, and then, and then you're started. The rest of the information, I've, uh, helped out Champion with the remedial litter information. They had some questions about some vacant lots and maintenance. And then, uh, yeah, pretty straightforward, uh, with the subdivision application, you saw the only subdivision application we had, so you know who it was, and discussed municipal reserve options. One thing of note that I didn't put in my report, uh, but I did wanna mention because some of you have been in municipal world here for quite some time, is, uh, Tracy gave notice in Womond after thirty... She's been, she's been with the village of Womond for thirty-five years, she's been a C A O for thirty-two, and she decided that now is the time, she's gonna be around till September, so, uh, Tracy, yeah, Tracy Dora is, uh...
That's good.
There in the recruitment process for a C A O at Womond, which is the first time in a long, long time they've had to do that, so... She plans on sticking around till September, so if any of you see her out and about, congratulate her on her retirement. So, I passed on greetings, you know, uh, uh, congratulations from both myself and the town as well, all right, so... But if you see her, listen. And other than that, the meetings of interest, obviously, uh, we have the tour of the pool, that was, uh, the most exciting that came up, and, uh, we're continuing to try to weed through the regulations of exactly what we can do and what we can't do, and, uh, from the other side of the pool, the, uh, family rentals has been very popular, so, uh, the way they got it set up, it looks like we can get two families in at a time, and, uh, and, uh, we're all gonna get through it, uh, one at a time.
How many in the family? You know? It doesn't matter.
As long, as long as they're in the same household, it doesn't matter, but, yeah, so, but...
This could all change tomorrow, because...
Yes, yeah, they're supposed to be making announcements later this week, so, that's what we've been doing, and like I said, we had the council, uh, due to weather and all we've done, and with the new booking system, it works out very well, they just credited their account, and then people, they said... Uh, Bonnie and Channing said that ninety percent of the people that, uh, ninety-nine percent or whatever, that, uh, they, uh, had to refund, turned around and just went back in and booked another time, so... And it's right online, but they were able to do that, they didn't have to do anything through the till that way. So, it's been working really well, so, hopefully, we booked our family one for June twelfth. Hopefully by then, the restrictions have changed, and, "You're all invited to our family rental." So, that's my administration report, ask council has any questions.
Well, there's the cost on the family rent.
Sixty hours for the hour.
How long do you have?
Uh, an hour, fifty minutes by the time you change it.
So, you can book more than an hour?
Well, I had, they're just in one-hour blocks right now, so, it's more the availability, there's not very much available because people are sleeping them out quick, so...
Fair enough.
Okay, anything else? Okay, uh, somebody wish to move the administration, I called Lauren. Any question on Laura's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. And it's carried out, so... Okay, moving on to the last one, we need to...
Somebody wanna call the show?
Well, I said that to her earlier, I sent her a text, said they're not gonna be here all night, so... Laura wants to be...
Wild thing, swim for the team.
Wait, how does she do that?
Okay. Those, they are, call the question? And it's carried out, so we are officially cleared, closed. Thank you very much, everybody.
My thing doesn't seem to want to sleep as bad, this is once for a while.